Good evening, everybody. I'd like to bring this meeting, the Osseo Area School Board, to order. It is 5:06 PM, April 3rd. And the purpose of this meeting tonight is to help select the next superintendent of the Osseo Area Schools. The topic will be the superintendent search, the finalization of the first round interviews, and the outcome of the meeting is designed to interview candidates for the superintendent position, as well as vote on a recommendation from Ray and Associates on moving forward to the next round. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, with me this evening, this is Mike Ostafi, Chair of the Board. To my right and around the table is Director Douglas, Director Fortner, Director Craig, and Director Brigitte. Again, just as a reminder, please turn any phones to mute to help with the candidate. So, let's start.
Good evening, Chair Ostafi, School Board members, community members, and staff members. Craig Morris from Ray and Associates, who is our consultant, would normally be here, however, believe it or not, he's delayed. So, he's asked me to present to you our next superintendent candidate, so I'm absolutely thrilled to present Ms. Kelly Parpar. She's currently the Assistant Superintendent for our Division of Leadership, Teaching, and Learning, so join me in welcoming Ms. Parpar.
How are you doing?
Good. Welcome. Can I say, greet the audience? Say. Thank you. Thank you all of you for being here. This is awesome because I know that the weather is good, so, thank you. Okay, I gotta leave your guys in the room. Thank you.
Okay. Just wanted to go over the ground rules again, just to make sure that we were doing everything similar with all of the members. We have fifteen questions that we're gonna try to get through in fifty minutes. So, we will try to keep time halfway through. We will try to get through all of them. And again, we will let you know when it's twenty-five minutes. You can start with an introduction, or we can go right into the questions, whatever works for you, and then we will go around the table with the questions.
So, I don't really think that I need to do an introduction, per se, but I do want to thank you for your time and for this opportunity. It means a lot to me. I've been in this district for twenty-one years, so I'm very committed to this district and the work of this district. I don't take your job lightly, and I don't take the job of the superintendent lightly. I know that this has been a long process, and so I just want to thank you for your time, and I want to let you know how committed I am to this role, to let you know that this is where I live, this is where I work, this is my home, this is where my heart is, and this is where I belong. I've been recruited to be principals in other buildings, I've been recruited to be a superintendent in other districts, but this is where I want to be. So, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Let's get started with the questions. So, first off, please provide specific examples of how you have promoted educational programs utilizing your communication and public relation skills.
Well, first of all, I believe that communication, being a good, strong communicator is one of the most important characteristics for a superintendent. I truly believe that, I believe that to be true of any leader. A superintendent has to communicate about our programs, certainly, but they also need to communicate about every single thing under the sun that you can imagine, from snow days to walkouts, to you name it. Those just cropped to mind because those were some of the latest lately. But, a superintendent needs to be an outstanding communicator. I know that I'm an outstanding communicator. I have very strong verbal, written communication skills. I think another important piece of communication is being a good listener, and so those are all parts of communication. I'm an English major, so communication is a virtuosity for me, and I think there's a number of people in the audience who've been the recipient of my communication help, even though they may not have always looked for it. So, I do know that that's very, very, very important. And some of the experiences that I've had at the building level, it was my responsibility, for example, when I was the principal at Park Center Senior High, it was my responsibility to communicate about our International Baccalaureate Program. That was a brand-new program, so that required a lot of thorough and comprehensive and transparent communication. So, there's a number of mechanisms by which to do that. So, there's websites, certainly newsletters, there's face-to-face communications, there's presentations, there's informal communications, and there's certainly formal communications, and all of those are necessary. I also communicated regularly when I was at Park Center on our site improvement plan, and again, that was important, to communicate the goals and the work that we were doing at the building, and to communicate those with our families and our stakeholders, through a variety of ways, same ways that I mentioned for the IB program. At the system level, one of the most recent ones I can think about, or I can think of, is work around our priority result presentations. So, I have led the priority results around middle-level instruction, for example. And so, middle-level, the middle-level model, I've had to present and deliver presentations to the Board on numerous occasions, and also to other staff and to middle-level staff. I've also been involved in presentations to the Board around career and technical education, as well as presentations around our positive behavior interventions and supports, and a number of presentations. So, again, the communication means that you have to design, you have to plan, and then you have to deliver. And I've had a number of opportunities to showcase my communication skills.
All right, thank you.
Okay, during the first year, how might you go about determining the strengths and weaknesses of our school district, and what specific steps would you take?
So, this is a little bit different for me to answer, because this would be next year, so it wouldn't be my first year, it would be my twenty-second year. So, with that comes a knowledge of the system, a knowledge of our strengths, and certainly a knowledge of the areas that need to be strengthened. So, I would say that the strengths of our organization lie with our people, number one, and foremost, they lie with the people. That's our staff, all staff of the district, our students, our families, our community stakeholders. We have highly committed, highly trained, highly dedicated staff and students and families in Osseo Area Schools, and that is an asset. I think another strength of ours are the processes that we have in place. We have very strong systemic processes in place, from everything for our financial budgeting processes, which you have all been a part of, a lot of those conversations, to our work with staffing, to our work with curricular programming and deciding which curriculums we'll offer. So, we have very focused, very strategic, and very intentional processes in place, which make us a strong organization. But there are certainly areas that need to be strengthened. We need to strengthen our academics. We have an achievement gap that's predictable by race, that's not acceptable. We have disproportionality in our special ed numbers, we have disproportionality in our discipline, and as I mentioned, we have disproportionality in our test results. Other gaps that I can recognize in our system right now would be losing students to other school districts, so recapturing our enrollment would be something that would need to, you know, be a focus. I also believe that we need to continue to strengthen our safety and security measures in the schools, for our staff and our students. I believe that we need to continue to strengthen our career technical education programs. We've heard from our students and our families that that's important to them, and we've also heard it at the legislative breakfast from our legislators. We know that that's important. And I want to continue to strengthen our pre-K and our early childhood family education programming. A survey that we did in 2016, Osseo Area Schools for outbound families, those are families that are choosing not to attend here, indicated that families make their decision about which schools they're going to attend before kindergarten. So, we need to strengthen our efforts. We have outstanding programming in pre-K and ECFE, but we need to strengthen our efforts about promoting that even stronger, so that we know when we get people in our district, they'll stay. So, there are certainly a number of areas, in my perspective, that need to be strengthened. But that's my perspective. So, those are the things that I see as needing to be strengthened. But having said that, it's important to know what other people think needs to be strengthened. So, it would be very important to listen and to learn from others, and learn what their shared experiences are about our school district, and what their lived experiences are, and what their perspective says about how we are meeting our mission statement. So, while I have my perspective, I need to listen and learn from others, too, because people hold very different perspectives.
All right, thank you.
What have you done to be able to increase the involvement of parents from different groups in the educational outcomes of their students?
Well, first of all, parent involvement is critical, it's essential. I know from my experience that a student is going to have a much harder road to success in academics if they don't have parent involvement, so parent involvement is critical. In fact, it's so critical that it's one of our four strategies, that's part of our world's best workforce plan, to engage students and families as partners in our work. So, it is very, very important, and it's challenging. It's challenging. So, at the building level, an example I'll give at the building level, is we had parent involvement meetings, but they were not well-attended, and that was primarily because high school parents, especially, in my conversations with them, I learned from them that they were at the school all the time. They were there for extracurriculars, they were there for co-curriculars, they were so busy with their busy children. And the last thing they wanted to do was to come to another parent involvement meeting. So, I married our parent-teacher conferences with our parent involvement meetings, thinking that if parents were already in the school for conferences, that they would be more apt to stay for a parent meeting, instead of having to make another trip out. That worked for a little bit, that had measured, you know, balance, measuring successes, not as well as I intended, but it was certainly something that we tried. We used the usual mechanisms, I used the usual mechanisms, such as school messenger, websites, and other correspondence to families, but that was with mixed success as well. What I found was more successful was to individually reach out to parents, to do intentional spearfishing, so to speak. So, to call parents and to ask parents specifically if they would be involved in one of our committees, or if they wanted to serve on DPAC at the system level, or CPAC at the system level, but I intentionally and purposefully reached out and invited people. I made personal invitations, and I found that to be, you know, very, very, very helpful. But, you know, and at the system level, let me talk about the system level for a quick second. At the system level, I am part of the division, I oversee the Division of Leadership, Teaching, and Learning, and as you may or may not be aware, the Department of Educational Equity is a part of that division. And as a part of our Department of Educational Equity, we have bilingual assistance, and those bilingual assistants are available to provide support for our multilingual families. We have a very, very strong American Indian education program. The American Indian education program is a way that we can partner with families to deliver services to increase the achievement of our American Indian students. And we have something that's called Real Talk Family Nights at our schools, and the Real Talk Family Nights involve families and gives them an opportunity to come and talk about their lived racial experiences. Two things that I'm very excited about that are on the horizon is I'm currently working with HR to change the delivery of our parent-teacher conferences. So, without getting into too many details, there's thirty hours of parent-teacher conferences, and those are at a set time throughout the school year, but that set time might not meet the needs of our students. So, there might be a student that really is in need of a conference between the set parent-teacher conference times. Then what? So, what we want to do is give sites the flexibility, starting with six hours, so they can hold six hours for team meetings at the middle level, if the team wants to meet with a family, individuals at the other levels, but so that we are more responsive and more receptive to the needs as they occur, versus waiting until we have a set parent-teacher conference time. So, I'm very excited about that opportunity to engage parents at a higher level. And last but not least, I have a pipe dream about this program called Ed Navigator. I don't know if you're familiar with it, I read about it in an educational journal. Right now, it's only in New Orleans and in Boston, but the premise of the Ed Navigator program is you go to where the parents are, and it's especially effective with our single-parent families, with the single-parent families in New Orleans and Boston, because it's often hard for families to take time off of work to attend to their students' needs, and that can often be a huge hardship for families. So, this program assigns a navigator to the family, that navigator is paid for by the company, and companies offer those navigators as a benefit. So, as they offer insurance, as they offer dental benefits, they offer benefits around having a navigator. So, here's why the companies pay for it. The way that they got the companies to pay for the navigator was by saying, you know, are you keeping and retaining your workforce, or are you noticing that people have to go to different appointments and a lot of appointments, and then miss work? So, they approached high turnover businesses, hotels, primarily, is where they started, at hotels where there was high turnover. And so, if families needed to go to conferences and they kept missing a lot of work, they maybe just didn't come back to work in fear of being fired. What the hotels now found is that they pay for those services. The navigator that's assigned to the family comes to the workplace and meets with the parent during their break or during their lunch hour, does the conferencing, handles disciplinary concerns, you name it, the navigator does it, they're former educators, and it's paid for by the business because the business has seen it as a huge benefit to their employees. When they offer that to their employees to come and get a job, their employees are more apt to work for those hotels than the hotel across the street, because at this hotel, they know that they're going to get services for their student, and that their workplace cares as much about their child as they do. So, they have found that they have been able to retain their employees. So, that's something I'm really excited about. I just talked with the creator of the program again the other day, they're not looking to start it in Minnesota yet, but keep your fingers crossed, I think it's a very strong program.
Thank you.
Okay, what has been your success as a school leader in partnering with higher education and the business community? Please mention the partnerships that have developed as a result of your leadership.
Two partnerships that would immediately jump to mind would be, one, that's called College Possible, and College Possible was a program that I started at Park Center Senior High a number of years ago. College Possible serves first-generation college students, so college-bound students that are first-generation college students. College Possible works with the students their junior and senior year, and then also follows them throughout the course of their college experience. I found it to be a very, very, very impacting and effective program, and in fact, it's still growing and flourishing at Park Center. And myself and the two other Assistant Superintendents just had a meeting with College Possible, and they were still singing the praises of Park Center and talk about how they use that as an example to grow the program and continue to have it flourish. Our families love it, our students love it, it met a huge need that we had at Park Center for first-generation college students. That's one program that I'm very excited about. Another program that I just began recently in the district is called GIA, Girls in Action. And the Girls in Action program is at our middle-level and our high school buildings, and it offers programming to identified girls who are maybe struggling in academics, struggling in other ways in school, maybe just struggling in life. So, it empowers them to, you know, bring a belief in themselves, it empowers them to have a focus for their future, and it provides the services around doing so. And I'm very excited, we're piloting it at three sites right now, and I'm hoping that next year that I could continue the program at additional sites at the secondary level. But there's been a myriad of partnerships over my years of leadership. I've partnered with Community Mediation Restorative Services, CMRS. On behalf of our work in DLTL, I've partnered with yoga comms, mindfulness training, Love and Logic training. I've partnered with Northwest Suburban Integrated School District for the delivery of the Magnet Program at Park Center. I partnered with the Association of Magnet Schools of America. I partnered with the International Baccalaureate Organization, which is a worldwide organization. There's many, many partnerships that have transpired over the years. As far as colleges, certainly, in my role, I've had to nurture relationships with colleges because that's the way that we continue to provide rigorous programming for our students. PSEO, post-secondary education options, jumps right to mind. So, in our PSEO options, that requires us to partner with colleges, not just the Minnesota State Colleges, but also the U of M, also North Hennepin and others, and we partner with them to provide concurrent enrollment opportunities, as well as articulation agreements. I also serve on the Advisory Board for North Hennepin Community College, which helps us to strengthen our partnership there, and I'm aware of the partnership and well-versed in the partnership that we have with Metro State, run through the Human Resources Department for Grow Our Own Programming. So, there are a number of partnerships, and I'm sure that I'm forgetting something.
Thank you. What has been your experience in determining both short and long-range district goals, and who should be involved in that planning?
Everybody. Everybody should be involved in the planning. One of our core values is seeking multiple perspectives and being intentional about including diverse perspectives at the table. So, the long and short answer, Jim, is everybody should be involved. I believe that there's a process that should be followed when you determine long and short-term goals. First and foremost, I think you need to examine your data and examine your current reality. You need to be clear on what your current reality is. Then I think you need to seek the multiple perspectives, as I said, you need to be intentional about that, I talked about that in an earlier question. The perspectives aren't always going to come to us. In my role as a superintendent, I would need to seek those perspectives. I believe that then you set the long and the short-term goals, then you have to actually implement the goals, and then, of course, you need to assess the goals as the implementation process unravels. I've had a number of experiences at the system level throughout my leadership, but I'm going to focus on, most recently, at the cabinet level. So, a long-term goal, when I think of our priority result work that we do in our district, I would consider those long-term goals. So, we do a lot of priority result work in our district. We do work around pre-K, we do work around PBIS, digital learning, middle-school implementation, recruitment and retaining our teacher force, especially those ones that mirror our demographics. We do welcoming and honoring families. We have digital learning. We have a lot of priority work results, and I would consider those to be long-term results. The end result of each one of those priority work statements should be increased student achievement. If it's not going to increase student achievement, it shouldn't be a goal. So, I think that all of our long-term goals should have that as a long-term goal. However, now, having said that, you can't just have a goal that goes from here to here and never measure that goal, because what do you have to indicate that you're making progress and you're heading in the right direction? That's where I believe short-term goals come into play. I view short-term goals as those checkpoints, as those stops along the way to make sure that you're on track, that you're heading in the right direction, and you're heading towards the completion of, the successful completion of that goal. But the short-term goals are necessary in order for you to get to the long-term goals. Our priority work are prime examples. Another example is the math implementation at the elementary level. I would view the long-term goal around that, again, is to improve academic achievement. I would view the short-term goal last year was around benchmarking other districts, researching curriculum, and meeting with vendors. That was the goal last year. So, that was the short-term goal in this long-term goal. This year, the short-term goal is the implementation of the pilot that is being done at all of our elementary schools. Next year, the short-term goal will be the implementation of the actual new curriculum. So, each one of the long-term goals has to have stops, has to have checkpoints along the way. The same is true of our foundational racial equity training. This year, we're spending time this year writing and figuring out the logistics of the training, or the content of the training, rather, and the logistics to carry it out. Next year's going to be important that I focus on the actual implementation of the training. So, within the long-term goals, there's short-term goals. So, I've had a lot of experience setting long and short-term goals.
Okay, thank you. We're at about twenty-one minutes in, and we've been through five, so...
Well, that's okay, I can fast, go fast.
All right. So, what experience have you had in working within the community of diverse elements, such as socioeconomic and educational levels, culture, race, and ethnicity? Please explain in detail, and please focus some on the socioeconomic and educational levels.
Oh, well, this one might not be the question I'm going to cut it short on, because this is the focus of my entire career. This is my heart's work. That's the best way that I can describe it. I was very, very intentional. I took a sabbatical from Anoka Hennepin when I was an English teacher. I wanted to go volunteer in the Minneapolis Public Schools because I wanted a diverse experience. At that time, Anoka Hennepin wasn't diverse, I was hungry for diversity. I needed those experiences, I knew that that would be fulfilling for me. I showed up on the doorstep of Craig Vanna, he was the principal at Edison High School, and I said, "I'm here to volunteer." He, of course, thought I was crazy, until I started showing up every single day and every single night. I was hungry and eager to learn about experiences that were not my lived experiences, and learn entirely different ways of being and different ways of looking at schooling. I cannot articulate enough how important it was. I then chose, they wanted me to stay at Edison, like, who wouldn't? I was volunteering my time every single day for free, but I said, "No, I want to go to North High School, I want the experience at North High School as well." So, I did, that went well, my changes in life, life happens, right? So, my situation changed, and I needed to get a full-time job. They went to the district office, the two principals, they said, "You have to hire her, you have to hire her in Minneapolis." I was hired in Minneapolis, became an assistant principal at Falwell Middle School. By the way, I was still employed in Anoka Hennepin, so I had to go and resign because I didn't fulfill the obligations of my sabbatical, I had to pay them back the next four years for every penny that they paid me when I was on sabbatical. But I knew from those experiences that I had found my passion, and that I had found, I had found my calling, I had found my work. That landed me at Brooklyn Junior High, I was at Brooklyn Junior High as an assistant principal, and then lead principal, a total of eight years, and then I was the lead principal at Park Center Senior High School for nine years. Park Center Senior High School is over eighty-five percent students of color, and over seventy-six percent free and reduced lunch. I know diversity, I know how to work with different socioeconomics and races, it's been, it has been my passion. I don't know if you're aware or not, but in our district, you can transfer, you're afforded the right to transfer from school to school at the same level. I could have transferred to Osseo Middle School, or junior highs at the time, Osseo Junior High when I was a principal at Brooklyn, I could have transferred to Maple Grove, I could have transferred to Maple Grove Senior High multiple times when I was a lead principal at Park Center, but my heart was working at Park Center and at Brooklyn Junior. That was my calling, that's the best way that I can describe it. I have seventeen years of experience, not including Minneapolis, so I'm gonna change that to... So I'm going to change that to 18 years of experience working with diverse elements such as socioeconomic and educational levels and culture and race.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. As superintendent, what would be your role in the budgetary process? Please specify.
Well, I think the superintendent's role in any process needs to support that process first and foremost, and to be involved in the process, not just oversee it, but to be an integral player in the process. So the superintendent needs to be enrolled in the budget process. My beliefs around the budget process is that it's one of the most important things we do. It's one of the strongest ways that we can build trust with community, and it's one of the quickest ways we'll destroy it. So the budget process is critical. You have to have a sound budgeting process in place so that the, our communities and our taxpayers trust what we're doing. They have to trust what we're doing. That requires us to be transparent. That requires us to put our money where our mouth is, so to speak. That would be in alignment with our priority work. Budgeting process can make or break a school district. It is, it is critical to building partnerships with our community and having them trust us. Being financial stewards of taxpayers' hard-earned dollars is not a role that I take lightly. Certainly not a role that I take lightly. So I think there's a number of steps in the budgeting process. I think you have to set outcomes. You have to create a budget process that is aligned with our priority work. You have to involve a variety of stakeholders that cite system and community members. And I believe that you have to create a budget recommendation that you'll then give to the board for approval that stays within the parameters of our budgetary constraints and also maintains our fund balance, which is very, very important. The financial budgeting process, again, it needs to be transparent. It needs to be communicated, communicated, communicated. And I know that you guys know that all too well because almost every work session we have has a presentation around the budget. That's how important it is. That's how transparent it needs to be. That's how important it is. So I believe that we need a variety of stakeholders in the financial planning process, and I believe that you need to have tools. Those tools are like baseline budgets. For our district, we also employ tactics. What does that do? That provides us the opportunity to project five years in advance. So again, we are fiscally responsible. We're not just looking now. We're not just looking to the next fiscal year. We're looking five years in advance. So again, in sum, the superintendent's role is to support that process, to be knowledgeable about all the revenue sources so that we can maximize spending for our students, and to be a key player in the process itself and well-informed.
How would you handle decisions that are unpopular with the public but educationally and/or financially necessary? Please cite actual examples.
Oh, boy. Well, I, one, one, I got to tell you, one jumps immediately to mind because it wasn't just unpopular, it was hostile. And this was a decision about changing the five o'clock or the football start times at Park Center Senior High. Now, I don't know about the rest of you, but I was never a football player. So I did not clearly understand the importance of Friday Night Lights. I clearly underestimated the importance of Friday Night Lights until I went to change some of the football start times to five o'clock. And, oh, my goodness. Oh, okay. So not only unpopular, that was just a whole different of level. So it was important for me to talk about why I was making that change, the recommendation for the change, because I believe that unpopular decisions are really just code for, "I don't like the change. I'm not comfortable with the change. I don't agree with the change. Change is hard for people." 50% of people will like the change, 50% won't. Hence, the unpopular decision. So I believe that, you know, you need to, you need to be clear on what you're doing, and you need to be firm in your convictions around it, as I was with changing the start times. We had severe, serious, serious, serious safety issues that were happening when we played two particular schools. And I did not want those games to be played after the sun went down. And that's all there was to it. And the police were huge supporters of that. The chief of police was very, very vocal about that for Brooklyn Park. But, I mean, I was called to the mayor's office. The mayor accused me of ruining Tater Days Parade. I don't even know how Tater Days got involved in it. But there, there were so many levels to this simple safety decision. But people came to see and to value the input of that decision. You know, another decision would be around IB, implementing the International Baccalaureate Program at Park Center. That was met with resistance as well because, again, change, change, a lot of people don't embrace change. And then, most recently, being involved in the grade span change. So while everything is great now, that was certainly one of the largest undertakings that I have ever been involved in, ever been involved in. And here's what I learned about the change process. Here's what I learned. You have to articulate the change. You have to build a shared vision around that change by providing the context for the change. You have to collaborate, 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 and communicate, communicate, communicate. And just when you think you're communicating too much, you might be getting close to the right amount. I know that you have to develop a plan for implementing that change, and then you have to evaluate it. And so here's what I've learned through some of the unpopular decisions that I've had to make in my leadership roles. What I've learned is if you have a sound change process in place, the change is apt to go much more smoothly, and you have to, again, bring multiple perspectives to the process.
How would you ensure that services are provided for gifted and talented, special education, career and technology, ELL, and visual and performing arts students? Give two examples of where you have developed programs to support two of these areas.
First of all, I believe, and it's my job, to ensure that we provide programming for all of our students that has high expectations, high degrees of support to go along with that, but challenging, rigorous programming for all of our students to achieve at their highest levels. And now specifically talk about, I'll start with gifted and talented education. I directly oversee the Department of Curriculum, Instruction, and Educational Standards. And part of my work with that division is around gifted and talented programming. So we provide a myriad of programming opportunities around gifted and talented. At the high schools, we, we provide high, high-performance classes. We provide advanced placement classes. We provide ALP, Autonomous Learner Programs, at some of our buildings. That's a combination of English and social studies classes rolled into one, but it's very rigorous. We have IB programming for the diploma program at Park Center. So we have a lot of rigorous programming at the high school level. At the middle level, we have specifically put our money towards differentiated, differentiated instruction, so much so that every year I have to make an intentional decision on behalf of DLTL, the Division of Leadership, Teaching, and Learning, to fund differentiation specialists for each one of our middle schools. And their sole job is to be sure that instruction is being differentiated to meet the needs of our highest learners and the needs with our learners who may be struggling in particular areas. And at our elementary level, we have talented and gifted staff that are in each of our elementary buildings that handle the programming. I'm also going to talk about career and technology because that's another area that I directly supervise. Our coordinator for career and technical education is in, is in the Department of Curriculum, Instruction, and Educational Standards, so I work very closely with the person in that position. While I believe that we have a really strong CTE program, we are definitely working to improve that. And let me give you some ideas of, most recently, what we're doing. First of all, let me back up, go all the way back to elementary. We have robotics at our elementary levels. We have Project Lead the Way at our middle school levels. And we have everything at our high school levels and our middle school levels, from tech ed courses to business courses to family and consumer science courses. All of these fall under career and technical education. And we're looking to expand, expand that even further. Next year, for the first time ever, there's going to be a course offered at Park Center called Computer-Integrated Manufacturing. And that's a fascinating course. And I would love to take any of you there next year to see it when it's being taught because I think you would really, really enjoy that opportunity. What we're also looking at for Osseo Senior High is 21st Century Trade Skills. So picture this. It's a tier, it's a tier of classes. The first year would be a trimester of a class that has modules on welding, woodworking, and carpentry. The second year would be advanced trade skills, so you'd have more trimesters of woodworking, carpentry, and welding, and you'd go much deeper into those. And you'd have to do a business plan, and you'd have to work with business owners. And so you'd have a much richer experience. The third year of that would be around providing an internship in those areas, woodworking, welding, or carpentry. So those would be the three tiers. It's another program we're really, really excited about. And by the way, we're looking, I should have said this in the partnership question because we're looking to partner more with the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry, Godfrey, who's our coordinator. We just applied for the Youth Skills Training Grant because we know that that's a way that we can strengthen our internship program in that we offer to students. Right now, we can pay internships for students, but they have to be 18 or older. The Youth Skills Training Grant, which we're hoping will be a recipient, that would allow us to pay for 16-year-olds and up, which would be huge for our internship programs. So we're doing a lot of great things around CTE, and we're looking to expand.
Thank you. We have 13 minutes left, and we're on question number 10. So just to give you a time update.
Thank you.
Please describe your beliefs about student discipline and safety.
Well, I believe that safe schools, safe and healthy learning environments are every bit as critical as academics. I believe that you can't focus on academics until you have a safe and healthy learning environment. When you look at Maslow's hierarchy of needs, until you meet those physiological needs and needs around safety and belonging and self-esteem, you're never going to get to those levels of high level of learning around self-actualization or self-transcendence. Won't happen. Won't happen. So until we pay attention to the safety needs in our buildings, nothing else is going to happen. We have to tend to the good order of the school first. I believe there's three primary ways to do that. The first is the easiest, actually, and it's relationships, relationships, relationships. There is nothing that can oversell the power of relationships. Absolutely impossible. Relationships are absolutely key to keeping a safe and healthy learning environment. People trust you. They come and report things to you. They feel safe telling you things. They're less apt to act out in your classes because they know that you care. Just like anybody, when people know that you care, they want to do well for you. Relationships key. The second piece is engaging curriculum. You have to have engaging curriculum that's culturally relevant, that keeps students at the center of their own learning, so they're engaged in their own learning, and they're active in their own, in their own learning process. And that way, the students will, again, be less apt to act out if they see themselves in the curriculum, if it's engaging to them, if it has them at the center. And the third piece is climate and culture of the building. And I always think of that in terms of proactive and reactive. So we do a number of proactive pieces in our buildings. We run drills. Our students are drilled, 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 and drilled, from kindergarten to senior high. They know how to do fire drills. They know how to do lockdowns. They're learning run, hide, and fight, but they are drilled, and it's important. We communicate our behavior expectations to students three times a year. It's a requirement that I have, that buildings communicate behavior expectations three times a year to the students and to the families so that they're clear about our expectations. We do a ton of work around PBIS. We do a ton of work with trauma-informed practices. We have SROs, which are school resource officers in our buildings. We partner with our local police. Proactive, proactive, proactive. And yet, we have 21,000 students. Something is going to happen. So we also have to have reactive pieces. It's our reality. And those reactive pieces can range from an alternative to suspension. So instead of being out of school suspended, you're in school, or an in-school suspension, restorative circles. And it can also range all the way up to a suspension from school or an expulsion from school. While we know that it's critical to keep kids in school, and they'll learn if they're in school, there are also some things that are so egregious that they cannot disrupt the good order of the learning environment, and they cannot create fear in others. It can't be tolerated. It can't be tolerated. When those egregious situations or criminal activities occur, I have suspended, I have expelled. I continue to do that in my current role, and I would continue to do that as the superintendent. We have got to maintain safe learning environments while keeping kids at school, you know, as much as possible.
You have a, oops, sorry.
What's that?
Is it your turn?
Yeah. All right. So if can, please give us some specific ideas of how you would judge your own effectiveness as a superintendent and how the board should evaluate your work.
So right now, I am evaluated, and I self-evaluate and self-assess myself on five leadership domains. And I feel that that's, that those domains are very appropriate. So that would be strategic leadership, performance leadership. Let me see. I know it's going to come to me. Well, there's a middle one. Management skills, and then interpersonal skills, and then professionalism. And I, and I believe those are very, very appropriate for my job, and I believe that they'd be appropriate for the superintendent's role as well. However, I think that there would need to be pieces that would need to be added. And one of the pieces would be board relationships and board development, and then community relationships and partnerships, and then one, I would imagine, around assessment and technology. I believe there's other ways, other than a formal evaluation process, to be assessed. Certainly, I'm, I, I am a very, very reflective person. Anybody that knows me knows I do a ton of self-reflection. So that's another way that I assess myself, and I talk with other people. So I am very receptive to feedback. As far as how I would, how you should evaluate my work, well, I hope that if we have a continued partnership, that we would meet together, and that together, we would design an evaluation plan that we would agree upon. And I hope that that evaluation plan would also have formative pieces involved in it so that I could know my progress as we went along. And maybe like standards-based grading, it could also provide me with multiple opportunities. That's just something that you might want to consider, just throwing it out there. But that's how I would like to be evaluated.
Okay. About seven minutes left, couple more questions.
What do standardized test scores tell us and not tell us about a school district? How can you ensure that ELL and FRL students can perform to their best abilities?
Well, I'm going to start with the standardized test scores. Standardized test scores certainly are important. They're certainly what the state uses to define our work in many respects, and they cannot be ignored. What they give us is a particular point in time for a student's academic success or knowledge at that particular point in time around particular subject areas, such as reading, math, and science. But it's a very particular point in time, and that's what it shows us. Is there a necessity for it? Absolutely. It lets our students know how they compare to other students in the state and other students in the district. So it absolutely is important. It's an important metric. We use our standardized test metrics to make many decisions in our school district. I use them when I work on priority results. I use them when I go through the budgeting process with DLTL and work with buildings. Yet, having said that, it's one part of a student's, a student's holistic picture. And here's, here's an analogy that I would give. It's like reading the first page of a book, or it's like looking at the first picture of somebody's two-week trip. It does not tell you the whole story. There are many, many contributing factors that come into play. We don't know if that student was homeless at the time of the test. We don't know what adverse childhood experiences that student had. We don't know what happened to him or her the night before. Many, many, many contributing factors. And I'll tell you what, standardized tests also think that every single student shows up on home plate at the exact same day, in the exact same place, when there are a number of our students that haven't even come into the stadium. Standardized tests makes assumptions that everybody is at the same place. I think it's important for us to look at other metrics as well, such as map testing, which allows us to see where students started. which allows us to see where students start in the fall and where students end in the spring. Then we can see how our programs are impacting. We can see how much that student grew from the time the student entered school till the end of the year. Is what we're doing working? So not that they maybe didn't end where another student in Minnesota ended, but did they grow? I also believe that, you know, continuing to do our student surveys, student engagement surveys, and find out from the students, what do they think? What do they think about the job that we're doing? Do they think that we're meeting our mission statement? So yes, standardized tests are our one metric. It's not the whole picture. We need to get a holistic view of the child. So there's a number of factors that have to be in play.
Thank you.
What are the key components of a successful curriculum and instructional program in a district? And how do you get each site involved in the effort?
Okay, so the key components, I'm gonna do this fast, Stephanie. Okay, so the key components is it has to be engaging, has to be aligned with the standards, should be culturally relevant and responsive. It should be rigorous and challenging to all students at all levels. I think that about covers it. So that's what I would say about what's powerful curriculum and instructional programming, and the pieces it needs to contain. And now, here's what I would say about how we involve sites. Again, working directly with the Department of Curriculum Instruction and Educational Standards, I oversee staff development, or that department, and myself oversee staff development, system-wide staff development. So through that staff development, we provide training opportunities for our staff, and get their feedback, and get their involvement in our curricular processes. We also have teacher advisory teams. And the sole purpose of teacher advisory teams is to weigh in on curriculum issues, to weigh in on programs that they would like to see added to their curriculums. We do summer curriculum writing for our teachers. We do pilots. Our math pilot is a perfect example of how we get sites involved. Every single site has a math pilot. And, you know, we, we know the importance of keeping sites involved in the process. So we also have a program improvement process, which is a very rigorous process that each of our curricula go through. And, and teachers and staff are involved in that process as well.
Okay, how do you provide the oversight and lead others who have direct responsibilities in a district this size? Specifically, how do you hold others accountable for delivering the mission of the district?
Well, I believe that you hold others accountable for the mission of the district by modeling it yourself. So first and foremost, I, I believe that, that as superintendent, I have to model that district, I have to, or our mission. I have to live it. I also believe that it's my responsibility, along with anybody who works in District 279, that if you see somebody that's not acting in a way that upholds our mission, or not acting in a way that upholds our core values or our strategic objectives, that you have a conversation with the person about that, and say the actions that I'm observing are not aligned with our world's best workforce strategic plan. That's what I would do, and that's what I would encourage other people to do as a superintendent. So, you know, role model and model yourself. Set those high expectations around our mission and our strategic plan, and how we expect people to interact with one another, and with their students, and with our families. And then model those expectations, and provide supports for people that need supports, and provide intervening when there needs to be intervening around our mission, and upholding that, and accountability. And then I think there needs to be accountability mechanisms. One of those would be our evaluation process, for example. Our evaluation process of our employees is rigorous for all employees, and it involves goal setting that must make a direct correlation to either our mission statement, one of the strategic objectives, or one of the core values. So there's live it, breathe it, model it, hold others accountable, and then build it into the evaluation process. And I could say more, but I know you're gonna call me on time.
All right, very good. And, and time for one last question, which is, do you have a question for the board?
I would just like to hear from each of you what, what you believe are the, your number-one strength that you see in this system, in our system. And then, so one strength, and then one area that you feel needs to be strengthened.
Jim, I'm not gonna make you go first this time. So, you know, you're welcome. So you can write down your answer. I'll start, so put me on the spot. But one of the strengths I have, I believe, and you hear it at every meeting, is bringing the issue around accountability of the results of a plan and the return on investment of that plan. So when I look at it, I look at it from the numbers, and I wanna make sure that people are, you know, is the implementation going well? Is it achieving the results expected? And if not, what are we gonna do to fix it? So I, I tend to drive home on that point. You know, a weakness that I need to build up is probably being able to do that in a less aggressive manner. So, you know, that's something I always tend to work on, but that's, that's what we look at. All right?
Thank you, Mike.
Um, I would have to say that one thing that I think that we can improve on is our specialized department. Not saying that the people that work in there aren't wonderful. I just think that we need more people to support our students that have special needs. And I also think that, that a lot of children who have special needs are not recognized for their talent. And they are sometimes very brilliant, but because they have a special need, they get left behind. And I don't wanna see that happen to our kids. One thing that I think that we're really good at is organization. There's always a plan, there's a process, and we're clear about, you know, what our intentions are every time we come to a meeting, even if the agenda is just short. Having that consistency across sites and having everyone know what's expected and how we operate is really important. So, and I think we do that really well.
I would say that an area of strength since I, that I've seen since I've been on the board is the implementation of the pre-K program in the areas of students that are needing it the most with the use of the voluntary pre-K dollars. I really like to learn about this program and the way that the district has implemented EL teachers in the classroom for those pre-K kids. I know how big that need is, and it's very, very important. And I'm really happy to see that our district has made that a priority. An area that needs to be strengthened is always the work on our achievement gap or opportunity gap. It's just important for all children to have the opportunity to be able to succeed, no matter what side of the district they're on, east side or west side. It's just important that all children have the opportunity to succeed in this district.
Yeah, and I will echo what Stephanie said on the achievement gap. I'm so proud of our graduation rates, they keep climbing, and that's wonderful. So I'm grateful for that. And I'll echo what Heather had to say on our organization. We just have strong systems in place, you touched on it as well. That builds community, community trust. You know, our financial planning team is amazing, and, and every, all the work that's done behind the scenes. It's real collaborative spirit, and I think that is a huge strength, so.
I agree. Thank you.
For me, I think, I think our, one of our defining strengths is our staff. The staff and teachers we have, they're amazing. So we wanna continue to support them as much as we can. But having said that, I also like how we, we focus on the mission. When we, when we look at new activities or initiatives, it's, it always comes back to the mission, and to, to help us stay focused on why we're doing this. And I think that's, that's a strength. And then the things to strengthen have already been said, I believe, and I think we all know. It's achievement gaps, and then I'd also add behavior and support. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So seeing that I thought you asked me what my strengths were when I needed to work on, and no one else heard those words. And no one followed my lead, so thank you. So, you know, so let's talk about strengths. I think the strengths is the ability to, 'cause I, I need to get mine in.
Sure.
You know, when, when we look at strengths of the district, I, I do think, you know, we do have a strong program of training people and, and working on that. So strengths of the people in the system. And I do think one of the things we need to work on is accountability of programs, and, and holding people and the systems accountable when the programs don't meet the, the outcomes that were expected, and, and the financial outcomes, the educational goals that were set forth, or maybe we didn't even set them forth when it was put in place. So that's a weakness that needs to be addressed. All right? So, time is up. Thank you very much for coming and addressing us tonight. Thank you very much.
I wasn't gonna clarify, but I thought I'd just go with it.
Yeah, thanks. You all hung me out the drive.
Hazard of going first.
I was thinking about what I was gonna say, so I wasn't listening to you.
Story of my life. Okay, so, I'll bring that down. So let's talk about what the next steps are gonna be. So what we're gonna do here in a minute is go into recess. But what we want to do is make sure that we collect everybody's input from the audience. So we need time to go through that feedback. So we're gonna go into recess, we're gonna collect that information. We'll get a chance to review that individually. We'll then go through a process individually with Ray and Associates. They will look at that, and that's what we did on March 19th, to come to the initial set of people we wanted to bring in for the first round. Then we'll come back from recess and receive Ray and Associates' recommendations. And then we will vote on that, we can discuss it, we can vote on that, on how to move forward with the number of candidates and which candidates. So that will be the process for the rest of the evening. I don't have a specific time for the recess, it's gonna be open-ended. It will somewhat depend upon how long it takes to get the feedback, go through it all, and then go through the process with Ray's, and then come back. So that's where we're at, and just wanna let everybody know. So at this point, I make a motion that we go into recess.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we are in recess.